I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Next is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of last week's minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last week's meeting.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have is approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve this week's claims for payment.
I'll second the motion for claims for payment.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. I have a 10:15 public hearing, so I will skip down to...
Number eight.
Item number eight. This is last week's, we did the first consideration and we waived the second consideration of ordinance 48. I'll go ahead and reopen this. We did not do a roll call, so therefore we need to go back and do it again. I will open up the first ordinance, the first consideration of ordinance number 48. Jess, you want to talk about ordinance 48?
So, we are just basically updating the nuisance ordinance. Some things that changed from the old ordinance were that we removed some nuisances that were unenforceable. We added some nuisances that are public health concerns. We made some specifications more clear on what information to include when citing someone for a nuisance. We added fines for people not abating the nuisance by the specified deadline. We edited some nuisances to make them more enforceable, such as adding setback distances. And we added definitions to make the nuisance violations more clear.
That's a test.
Yeah.
Just to tell everybody that's a test.
Yeah, we're in a good spot. Were there any questions from the public? I know we went through this last week, but are there any questions by anybody? Hearing none.
I'll make a motion to approve the first consideration of ordinance number 48 and ordinance to define and prohibit and abate nuisances to the public and private property.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the option to waive the second consideration of ordinance number 48.
I'll make a motion to waive the second consideration of ordinance number 48.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we go to the adoption of ordinance number 48, an ordinance to define, prohibit, and abate nuisances to public and private property.
I'll make a motion to final, for adoption of ordinance 48 and ordinance to define, prohibit, and abate nuisances to public and private property.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do I have Lynn here at all?
No, I just noticed that too.
Let's jump to item number 12, maybe Lynn will come in for this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Totaling $820 for the month of July. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Now we have the item number 13, which is approval of tax levies, tax payable 2017-18.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the tax levies for taxes payable 2017 and 18.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 14, which is change of status in the sheriff's office.
I'll make a motion to approve the promotion for John Lipman as sheriff deputy at $20.43 an hour, effective August 8th. And it's, after six-month probation period completed, the wage is increased per the union contract to $21.69.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have are some changes statuses for the conservation department.
The first is resignation of Blake Harris. He is a natural resource manager in the conservation department. His last day of work will be August 10th, 2017.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Just want to thank him for his service. And we're losing a good man to Johnson County, so I want to wish him the best and thank him for the years he served us.
Sorry to see him go.
Julie, you had a comment?
Perhaps if maybe that conservation workers paid what they should have been paid, we wouldn't be losing them. I mean, is their pay going to be brought up to standards like everyone else's in the courthouse or is it not? We wouldn't have that much enough perhaps. Is that not right?
It's a statement, I can't say whether it's correct or not.
Okay. Are you going to bring up conservation workers' pay to the level that it should be?
That will be discussed next week.
At public meeting?
On the 10th. We have a work session.
It's too bad we have to person because this is going to be so slow.
Here are the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The next is the end of seasonal position for Marie Mastin at Conservation Department. She was a Calkins intern. Her last day of work will be August 12th, 2017.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The next I have is end of seasonal position at the Conservation Department, is a Calkins intern for Nicole Jones. Her last day of work will be August 18th, 2017.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The next I have is a resource intern. It's an end of season position for Trevor Stockdale. Last date of work, July 23rd, 2017.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Just want to thank them for a good summer.
All three of them. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That's all I had for those.
Okay.
Next I have is number 16, which is an application for fireworks permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks permit. The applicant is Vern Schwartz, applying for the Vern Schwartz family. And the dates for the display will be August 12th, with the rain date being August 13th. And they will be exploded at 21649 E Avenue in Alden.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is number 17, which is an appointment to Mid Iowa Growth Partnership.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dustin Ingram to the Mid Iowa Growth Partnership.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? This appointment is what we make to Mid Iowa Growth Partnership, our recommendation for our...
That is correct. Parton County is a member of the Mid Iowa Growth Partnership, and with that comes two representatives from Parton County, so this will replace Jefferson Hospital.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I got 10:11, so I'm going to keep going.
Utility permits.
Let's do utility permits. Item number 19.
I'll make a motion to approve permit 8-2-17A. It's a motion to approve Harden County utility permit, application by Heart of Iowa Communications for the purpose of installing direct vary fiber optic cable under 170th Street, V Avenue, and 180th Street, located in sections 3, 4, 5, 9, 10, 15, and 16 of Clay Township in Harden County.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have another permit.
I'll make a motion to approve permit 8-2-17B. It's a motion to approve Harden County utility permit, application by Midland Power Cooperative for the purpose of boring under County Highway D-65 for service to a hog site located in section 27 of Grant Township in Harden County.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have 10:12. Let's go ahead with item number 20, which is open pickup truck bids for Secondary Roads Department.
Oh, wait.
Do you want to do secondary roads? I had something that had to take a couple minutes.
I can. Secondary roads?
Well, I just, I got a email from the DOT. In 2019, they're going to resurface Highway 175 from the junction of 65 over to Highway 40.
What year?
2019. The project we left in fall of 18. And we've asked to have the gravel roads paved back 75 feet. So, I sent an email stating that I gave you where each of the locations are. It's kind of a detail of it. The detail in here says 46 feet, but I emailed and asked for 75. And I'm very bad. They still have a estimate in place that could be spread out over the county just as... Grundy has decided if they're going to participate or not. So, neither have you, so I'm just giving you this information.
We've been doing it when they did the last project.
We do it on ours, and we've done it on the last eight projects.
Anything else for secondary roads? All right, I got a minute left. I'll go ahead with item number 20, which is open pickup truck bids for Secondary Roads Department.
Put out requests for bids for two pickups for our department, so forget two responses back. First one from Union Auto. List price is $50,015, a discount of $13,572. Dale Howard. They have a total price, they did it for both trucks, they did split it up, and it's $99,408, discount of $31,856.
I would reckon...
It's like they've got delivery date of September for Union Auto, late September, late October for Union Auto, late September.
What were those amounts again?
Can you read that a little bit?
Yeah. Well, no, just Dale Howard.
Okay, $99,480.
Oh, $480, okay.
Less discount.
Yep, subtract $31,856.
Yep, all right. I had 408. I was going to say that doesn't add up. Okay.
Do you want to take them back, make sure you're comparing apples to apples, and then get back to us next week on these? So, I need that in motion.
I'll make a motion to have Bruce go back to review the bids, make sure that we're comparing like vehicles, and bring it back for next week's meeting.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I am now after my 10:15 deadline, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing on the animal feeding operation construction permit, Justin Finisher Farm, Section 6, Buckeye Township. This is a public meeting, so anybody would like to speak?
I'm Tim Hamilton with Iowa Select Farms, representing Challenger Farms 5. We are proposing a 5,000-head clean-to-finish site. There'll be two farms, will, obviously in the Section 6 Buckeye. This is due to the continued expansion and growth of Iowa Select Farms, and also the need for the farmers to sell us the ground for the manure and to transfer the crops. I'd be happy to answer any questions that...
Okay. Julie?
And so who will, who will own these sites?
The hogs will be Iowa Select Farms.
Oh, okay. And so, how much manure will they produce in one year?
I don't even have a number. It's all in the matrix.
Oh, but don't you have to know that in order to know the amount of acreage that will accept that manure?
Yes.
And...
It's all in the, in the matrix and in the permit.
And I would ask that the supervisors recommend to the DNR to not recommend this permit on grounds that Harden County has too many hog factories now. It's causing continued degradation to the water in this county. Water in Harden County and throughout Iowa should not be sacrificed for Iowa Select Farms' profit-taking and leaving the mess for future generations to clean up. This past weekend, we had Pine Lake Festival, and I believe that there was a warning sign at the beach. I know it was there. I walk my dogs there daily. On two days, there were families with, the first day there were grandparents with two children wanting to go into the lake. They were just standing there looking at the beach, and I said, "I'm sorry, you might not want to take your kids in there, but we have a nice pool in town." The next day, there were grandparents, parents, three children in suits, towels around their necks, and I'll never forget this, three large inflated sharks. And they're wanting to go in that water. And I looked at, you know, a bit more in, and I said, "Oh, we're so disappointed." I said, "And I'm apologizing for the condition of the water." I said, "I'm very sorry, you know, we have a pool in town. I'm apologizing for the degradation of the water. I'm trying to stop further degradation of the water in this county and the preparation of hog confinement. Please recommend to DNR not to issue this permit. Thank you."
Any other comments? Steve?
I'm Steve Perry. I don't know, I guess I'm here as a producer and a, and a member of Harden County corn. I'm a member of Iowa corn. I can appreciate anybody's concern for the environment, especially since we're in a relatively sensitive area. But after five years of downturn in an ag economy, I think that it's not necessarily just profits for Iowa Select, it's profits is going to the producers, the guys taking care of these hogs, the people that are utilizing the manure for their crops are doing it according to DNR specifications. And I'm, I'm not here to back either one, I'm just showing what I feel from my point of view as being a producer, and, not an owner, but a producer here in Harden County.
Thank you.
It is unsustainable. Farming here is unsustainable, so I mean corns, hogs, it is unsustainable. I would hope, and I know that some area farmers are frustrated as well by the manipulation of markets. It's unsustainable. Please try to innovate.
Any other comments?
I just, I'd like to add that we do meet the required, called 440 points of the matrix for that that's required by the DNR.
The state. State's requirements.
Right.
I just want to clarify. Any other comments?
Brian Kraus, President of Arcadia Fire Bureau, and the most probably known major. You got to compare with Steve, dude. Buckeye right now is going to $3.10 a quart. Your $50, $0.50 to $1 will cost. Guys, we need guys like Iowa Select to bring it up. With price of fertilizer and everything, we need the fertilizer manure. Everybody knows how to use it, nobody's going to waste it. We can't afford to. You know what? So, we need things like that. Besides that, when it meets matrix, I feel sorry for you guys, you don't have an option. You know, it's out of your hands, you can recommend what you want, but when it meets it, it meets it. You know, it's appreciated what your statements, what you can do. But everybody's looking out for everybody. You know, Julie, I understand what you're saying.
We have a discussion after this, that?
Sure.
Good.
But what I'm saying is, we're here, I've got a grandchild that lives in Wellsboro. You know, I've got two boys, one in Webster and one in Buckeye. I'm the farmer that runs hogs, so I'm not going to kill it for anything.
But you think crappy water for them to deal with, for generations to come?
But I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and thanks for much, Julie. Thanks for helping me.
Any other comments? Have there been any written comments? No more comments. There, I can take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now is the recommendation to DNR an animal feeding operations construction permit, Justin Finisher site, Section 6 of Buckeye Township.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the DNR on the animal feeding operation construction permit, Justin Finisher Farm, Section 6, Buckeye Township.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? It's been out, it's been inspected, it has met all the requirements. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is item number 11.
Thank you.
I don't know if Lynn ever made it here or not.
I'd make a motion to table item 11, so Lynn can adequately represent the policy that has been suggested.
Okay.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 It's tabled. Next I have is item 18, which is revise the IRVM job description. I didn't put this one on the agenda, so somebody's going to have to enlighten me.
I just got off the phone with Paul Groove, and he said, "I'm going to go for an hour, but if you want me to get a conference call in, go ahead."
Would you like him to conference call in?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Mike, do you want that other microphone to put by the phone, or?
Yeah, we go to conference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to find his number here without calling him.
Hey Julie, while they're doing that, would you take a look at this? Lisa called this one, and I want...
I got dial nine to get on, right?
...as much information as I can, like in a formatted form. So, I'd like to be with you and just, and Lisa might, if we can get together, if you look at this. Is it, okay? All right. Thank you.
Have you reached Paul Groove?
I swear to God, my phone might just die.
Nope, I don't have him. Well, I don't have Paul here, but... Would you guys like to say anything?
Well, I'd like to get Paul's human resources, you know, interpretation of what we can do with the IRVM position, making it potentially a standalone department on its own, or putting it under the guise of conservation. It appears to me that there's a lot of similarities in knowledge, skills, and abilities that could be utilized, working with conservation, or allowing Megan to use her knowledge, skills, and abilities, and education to, you know, have her own independent department where the chain of command and oversight of employees, resources, and budget could be utilized in a responsible fashion. So, I just would have liked Paul's input on how, you know, we can get to one place or another, and what that process looks like, and how, you know, we can bring that to where it needs to be.
I think it's something that, that the board was in on the interviews and everything, and I just think it's something that we can, we can handle, you know, with a motion or whatever, because I agree, I, I think the education... I think the education that she has and the knowledge regarding the IRVM program fits more in line with the education and training that the conservation people have had versus being under secondary roads or under the engineer. And in her job description, it does say that she serves as the trainer, inspector and manager for the staff, dealing with the cedars, tractors, mowers, sprayers and other roadside management equipment. Also, that she supervises staff, including but not limited to assigning, checking and planning the work schedules of full-time seasonal and volunteers. And another place says, "Ability to supervise, support staff engaged to carry out the program." I understand that there's times when...
Thank you.
Yep, it's on speaker.
Megan has given her employees jobs, the jobs to do for that day and has got, and the employee gets the call to go do something else for the roads department. And I just don't think that's a good mesh. I mean, to me, she should have control of her employees and it's putting the employees in a bad spot, not knowing who their boss is and whose orders they're supposed to follow. And I truly believe, at least I had the intention when Megan was hired, that Megan would be in control of her employees and they would be taking orders, if you want to call them, from her and not the secondary roads people. And that's, kind of hits the nail on the head for most of what my issue is.
Currently, it's set up, I'm sure, first things first, currently it's set up that the IRVM manager, we commissioner and IRVM manager work under the engineer, correct?
That what? No.
Works under the engineer, correct?
That's how it currently is.
Okay. And from there, we want to either make it another department or change to conservation. It just came from conservation. What, a year and a half ago, two years?
Two years.
Has anybody talked to conservation on this issue about moving it back to conservation? Last time we did that, we originally met with your board.
Right. I was just going to say, for anything like that to happen with the conservation board, we'd have to have a meeting and we'd have to have input from each board member and ultimately go to a vote to be integrated back into conservation. So it's something I'd have to meet with my board about and we'd have to have a vote on that. And there's a lot of other things I think would have to be hammered back out. I will say that, you know, we just haven't gotten out of the arrangement. Two years ago, we kind of got everything settled back down and stuff situated, so yeah, there's a lot of questions I have about it.
Burl?
Being on the board, conservation board, I'm hearing something new here that I, because obviously it just came up recently. I've not heard anything about, but you know, when we had it and it was switched over, I guess I thought, I didn't understand anything was going not smoothly, but it sounds to me like you have two options, either give it back, which I'm not for, or put in an independent department, which sounds like there's obviously enough projects, enough things to keep that department possibly busy on its own. And that way your employees would have someone they had to answer to more so than obviously it is now. And obviously they're flexible now to assist the secondary roads, which in my understanding, they are not even considered secondary roads first now.
Right.
They're IRVM people. So where are those wages coming out of? IRVM or secondary roads to support them?
IRVM.
And IRVM, as far as I can see this year, I haven't seen roads sprayed anywhere. We got weeds everywhere.
And I think, I mean, Megan's pretty, Megan's really new to the department and in talking with her, I'm convinced she's got all the capabilities of being her own department.
Well, yeah, obviously, you know, it sounds like she has leadership ability, but what am I saying? The need is obviously somewhere else and somebody's pulling her away, pulling her staff away. So that's why, I don't know Megan. Is this Megan?
This is Megan.
Yeah, that'd be Megan.
Yep.
But you know, if her staff's being pulled away from her, she's not getting anything back.
Right. And she's only got two employees, whatever, but there, I just think there needs to be some changes. Megan's department has the opportunity to save the county a lot of money possibly in some of our bid processes when, with doing seeding for bridge projects, road work, when, you know, reseeding ditches, all that kind of stuff is something that she can do. And also drainage, some of the drainage issues maybe that we've had. There is the opportunity there for the county to save some money also with the IRVM department. But I think it needs to be, I mean, I'm for putting it under conservation or an individual department. My, the way I would view it if it's under conservation would be, she's pretty much doesn't, I mean, she doesn't really need oversight or anything, I don't believe. And what I would see is just maybe once a month or once a quarter even, that she and Wes would come in, meet with the board of supervisors and we would have some say in maybe in what her programs are and what, what projects we'd like to see or have her bring those to us and so we know what's going on. But I don't see that she would need daily management by anyone.
Well, yeah, she obviously has the management skills.
Right. Yes.
She just needs control of her personality.
Right.
Herself.
Right. And one of the other things I'd like to address is, besides being a very capable and educated person, I believe that, you know, in the past, the tools for her to effectively do her job are not at her disposal at this time. When she came on board, the spray truck, you know, Sprayer Specialties and Grimes pointed out that the spray truck has no agitator on the tanks. I'm not an expert agricultural producer by any means, but I sprayed lawns with my friend's dad through high school and college and without an agitator, you're not getting, you know, proper product placed. Without having, you know, the control unit properly maintained and in place, you can't spray. And then with all the legal and record keeping, we need to know where that truck has been so we're not duplicating efforts and doing redundant activities. So hand recording that is effective, but with new technology, as she drives, it can plot her route and put that into a system. So if somebody says, "You sprayed my wildflowers," you can say, "We weren't even on this road" or "This is where we were, what we were or weren't doing." So that record keeping, so the tools to effectively do her job, both in a safe and efficient manner, are not there.
And the record keeping is a requirement by law for what she is spraying and that hasn't been done in the past. Also, the storage for, I mean, she's given us a, she's met with us and we were made aware of the issues that she walked into. This is all, and there's also a reason for the weed problem in the county from, that was there, that she discovered.
Because she walked in.
That she walked into and she's the one that discovered why.
And so today, I believe today is a new day and we want to give Megan and every other county employee the best ability to do their job, whether they're at the jail, they're spraying road sides, whether they're plowing snow. No matter what, we need to give the employees of Hardin County the best tool to do their job in the most efficient and effective means possible to make the process go smoothly and keep the people happy, healthy and safe.
How could, if the truck didn't have the agitator, our chemicals have changed so much in the last few years.
Right.
You know, they settle out whatever. Was there a limit put on this? I've seen the truck, I know what it looks like. We've met it out to conservation. But is it being utilized at all now?
It can't be.
Okay.
Megan, you want to?
So I actually went and bought parts and I put, the only agitator I got on it was a three-quarter, which isn't, it's not an efficient one. So it does get agitation, but we have to let it agitate for like an hour in order for the herbicide to mix properly. And then we can't add more than 100 gallons per time because then it doesn't mix properly and you have your surfactant, which it comes out like a syrup. It just sits at the bottom and then your herbicide's at the top.
I know. We run into the same thing on the farm.
Yeah.
Right.
If you don't have that agitator, it's going to plug everything out. It's going to be a mess.
And so I started in June and the staff that was already in place had been spraying before, but they've been spraying without the agitator and without some of the modifications I made to it. So when I am out there spraying, I know that it's not up to code. So it's just, and we, I do try to get them out there. We so often I've been dividing up the day, so half of the day we'll do something and we'll spray the rest of the half or, because it's just a lot to go and come back to the shop.
Oh, exactly.
I think, I think we're getting a little...
Yeah, come back to refill or... Yeah, that's not efficiency.
We're getting a little far off track on, as far as the question I have.
Anyhow, I'm speaking as myself on the conservation board. I would not like to see it come back to us and sound like there is an option that she would have her own.
The history of this job is, it started off under the engineer, it went to its own department, moved to conservation and ended back up at the engineer since I've been here. Is that accurate?
Probably.
And it seems like it's a circle. It keeps ending up back at the engineer because of the manpower that the secondary roads also assists in cutting trees or the extra help and that's, I'm not up to date on everything that's happening, so I understand that she would be managing her own employees. I didn't know that that's an issue until recently. But has she talked to her boss at all? When it comes to that, if this is an issue? I'm not trying to, there's a chain of command here and it feels like I'm skipping it. Paul?
Yeah, from my perspective, I mean, a lot of the conversation is good conversation, but it's probably related to step three, four, five and six. So I apologize for the pun to kind of pull us back out of the weeds here. To me, the key question is reporting. So for whatever reason, there's confusion as far as the organizational structure and the reporting relationship. So to me, it doesn't matter how we got here, but we're now aware that there is some confusion. So my belief is the board of supervisors really could probably make one of three decisions. Number one, you know, do you want to reach out to the conservation board and have them consider taking over this position in this department? Option two, letting the position become its own department? Or option three, have it remain in secondary roads? Now, so all the other issues about reporting and how we get information, the usage of staffing from secondary roads, all those are relevant, but they're all going to be hinged upon that first question. So there's a whole bunch of dominos that can fall, but question number one is, where do we want this position to reside? And if it stays in secondary roads, there'll be a separate set of dominos that we need to discuss. If it's its own department, that's a separate set. If it's to ask conservation, that's where we would have some additional questions. But really, that to me is the key today is to say, where does this board of supervisors, you know, think this position would be best suited as far as an organizational structure and a hierarchy? And then once that decision's made, all these corresponding questions can be addressed in order then.
From that standpoint, option one, which is going back to conservation, I don't, I'm not in favor of that with the board member here. Wes, what do you think?
Well, I'd have to visit with my board first. I mean, this is going to have to take a board discussion and vote before we can make a decision on our board.
Wes?
Yes.
Wes, would that be something you would recommend? In understanding that this isn't a personality based anything, it's just more of a, given the work that you do, my belief would be the conservation board would take into consideration your recommendation. And if your thought was, "Yeah, no, I don't want this back," I get it. I don't think anybody would have any ill will toward you, but do you think this would be something you would recommend that they accept?
So you're asking for my personal opinion?
Yeah, I mean, if I'm a board member, I'm going to go to you and say, "Hey Wes, what do you think?"
Well, since we just got out of it, not less, not more than two years ago, and we just got everything settled back down and rearranged, I'm, at this point, I'm not in favor of turning everything upside down again. I, I think she should be her own department, myself.
Okay.
You know, she's got her own employees, she's got the capability, she's, she knows what she has to do. She's worked for Story County, IRVM, so she's got the grasp of all the duties and responsibilities of IRVM, so.
Yeah, and if that was, let's say, as an example, that's the board's decision, we're going to have a standalone department, you know, then we have to discuss where will the office be? How do we utilize, is there some natural connection between this new standalone department and secondary roads, which there quite possibly could be? And so then there could be just some decisions made as far as how do we move back and forth with staffing, you know, in the winter months? Does her employee move back and forth? So all those things could be addressed. Additionally, I think as Renee mentioned, you could say, you know, "Hey Megan, we want a quarterly update or a monthly report and then a quarterly face-to-face," because assuming she would report directly to the board and then you guys would have a good idea of what was going on. So that would certainly be a solution. If the thought is, if the gut feeling is conservation may not really be interested in taking this on again, you know, then we're down to those two decisions, either we're to add or create a separate department.
Can I ask Wes and Burl, what were the issues when IRVM was under conservation?
It's just with our location and everything and the communication that needs to happen between the road crew and the duties that have to be done by IRVM. We made it work, but it was just kind of a disconnect. It wasn't, it didn't flow as well. Plus, the other thing was the space. We're very limited on space where we're at. That's why we submitted a grant for a building.
Which was approved and we had.
Which was approved and it happened. So that was a definite need, was space.
I can understand that.
The other thing is, is, you know, to have a water fill, she needs a quick fill to fill sprayer tanks. We didn't have that available at our location. So even though the office was there, it was just so spread out. I mean, we, like I said, we made it work, but it just didn't, it just didn't flow as well as I thought it should have. And then they, they still have to work with Daryl's department, of course, you know, to get their work orders and things like that. You know, it worked, but it, I just, it just wasn't very smooth.
You know, work her up north.
Yeah, I know.
And she's talking, being handy to refill, like Wes says. Here you're centrally located, more centrally located to work out of.
Correct.
You know, and I'm available to, you know, I've talked to her about seeding and things like that and definitely we can work with her on those kinds of things, you know. We've got places that have seed plots that you can harvest for seed and things like that, that were established in the past. Like I said, I think she should be your own standalone department because it's just, it makes sense to me to do it that way. That's just my opinion.
So step one, sounds like it's out?
So I'll make a motion to change IRVM to its own individual department and to work equally with the engineers department or secondary roads department and conservation. And I, but I would like, well, I guess that's my motion, I guess. And I, but I would like, well, I guess that's my motion, I guess.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just like to add that the department would report directly to the board of supervisors.
And I would also like to see the discussion held with the conservation board to see if something can be worked out. And I'm not talking, you're not going to be able to house all the equipment or any of that. Or we need to find a, you know, we'll work out the details and logistics, I think, after, after this is done. But Megan has to know that she makes the decisions for her department and she has the authority over her workers.
Any other discussion?
How long has the board known about this?
The conflict of knowing exactly who she's going to report to, what her duties are. When we were in the initial hiring process, there were questions about, you know, why it moved. I'm new, I didn't know all the history of why it went from conservation back to your office, what the issues were. And now, I feel that, you know, Megan has the knowledge, skills, and abilities, the work ethic to, you know, grow a department. And so, and we've given her an assistant that, you know, there's plenty of work to do. So, you know, over the last couple of weeks, I think that it's just been brought to our attention that besides the equipment not being available to her to do the job adequately and having those things, she's proven to me that she can lead a department and grow a program that benefits everybody in Hardin County.
And she did come to us.
My question was, when did you know that these issues were going on in secondary roads? And why didn't you approach me? You did know that I was the department head. You understood that. And yet, this came up and it surprised me yesterday. And nobody would answer any of my calls or talk to me.
We had talked to Paul about the issues that Megan had reported, feeling that the issues weren't properly addressed.
There's more issues that we can't discuss here that I have discussed with Paul.
Right. But this is a matter of, not personnel, this is a matter of classification of a department at this point.
You never asked my opinion one time.
No.
Correct.
Correct.
You never gave an ask at all.
Correct.
That's what I need to know. I hope that you do make it its own department here. And I think that you should become familiar with the Iowa Code 317.7 also.
I started reviewing that yesterday.
Any other discussion? I believe we're premature in this decision right now. I'm really not sure what the motion even said. That they work equally with conservation and engineer's department.
Can I rescind that motion and remake it?
Sure, I'll second her rescension of her motion.
It's been moved and seconded to rescind the motion. What are we rescinding it to, just taking it away?
I am changing my motion.
I'll just take the rescinding. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I no longer have a motion on the floor.
I will make a motion to put IRVM as its own individual department at this time.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? The discussion on that would be, what are we going to put in play? What equipment is there? What storage is there? Where are we putting it? If we make this motion and accept it today, where's it going? Where's she, where's she working out of?
Currently, the equipment needs to remain where it is because there is no other place for it.
It's not under secondary road department. You can only spend secondary road money in secondary road stuff. It can't be used for any other purposes.
And we'll figure out the details on where her location will be.
I guess I would, I would like to.
We have an empty space in the courthouse.
I guess I would like to work on this, at least for a week, to get some of the details put in place. We're trying to do something in a blink of an eye and I don't know where we're going with it. Okay, we give an office here, where's the equipment going? We're going to park it out front? I mean, I really think we're premature in this decision, but I think it's valid worth talking about. But let's get our details put in place first. Paul, would you like to chime in on that?
Yeah, I think you can, I mean, if the, if the motion passes, you know, then to me, the directive to Megan would be, "Okay, Megan, you know, you're a standalone department now, so why don't you put together a plan, you know, touch base with conservation and secondary roads? You know, get an idea of what available options there are for office location. So, yeah, you could make it its own department and then direct Megan to come back to you in a week with a summary document of how we think this is going to work."
Yeah, and in the meantime, I mean, I can work with her to come up with something that would be acceptable.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, or I'll do a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries. From there, I think we've covered everything. If I missed anything, jumped around.
Other business. Yeah, other business.
Other business? I do have a 11 o'clock Drainage District 22 meeting. I'm going to move our regular drainage to 1:00 P.M. Recession until 1:00 P.M. We can adjourn from this meeting, though.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.